This study session of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, April 16th, 2024, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. This meeting is being streamed, and interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/ISD535. Tonight's meeting is also being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel following completion of the meeting. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/simply. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pecow, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Marvin.
Here.
Director Cook?
Here.
Director Garcia?
Here.
Director Paulson?
Here.
Director Martin?
Here.
Director Lewis?
Here.
Director Wilson?
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No approval, seconded.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Our focus topic tonight is People Strategy Recommendations. This is an information item with an update on a district-wide initiative for system change or DISC from our strategic plan. Superintendent Pecow?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I want to begin way down in the weeds and say that I think we have one too many stations. Because we have got, we need seven, and we have got Dr. Marvin and Jackie Peterson out there floating in the ether. So I'm not exactly sure how this is... We need a board member, that's it. Dr. Marvin?
I'd be happy.
Would you? Jackie can pick wherever she wants to go, because the theory here is we have a cabinet member joining a board member. I will explain the larger... Thank you, Amy. So let me take one step back and in particular, thank all of the folks who are here as facilitators and members of the working groups that worked on our people strategy for being here tonight. As you can tell from the layout of the room, we're trying something a bit different that I hope doesn't go down in flames, but it will be fun nonetheless. As board members are well aware, our strategic plan has rolled out in three phases. Some began year one shortly after the board approved the plan in the summer of 2022. Others happened the second year, and we're in the midst of a third wave right now. And in each case, our processes have begun with what we've called a design phase before we move into an implementation phase. And in the design phase, we have looked at data, we've gathered evidence, and we've especially gathered stakeholder feedback from diverse parts of the Rochester Public Schools community. This meeting really shares with the board the first milestone in our design phase for what we have been calling our people strategy. I initially called this strategy our "human capital" strategy because that's a term that, in my world, previously around research and youth development and education and economics captures building the capacity of people. I got a very earnest email from a staff member in RPS at one point that said they thought the term "human capital" sounded too capitalist and mechanical and inhumane. So in an effort to go to a completely different space, I just started calling it the people strategy. And so what this tonight summarizes is the really dedicated work that seven working groups have done around the issues that came out of our strategic planning process. So in the process that happened during the 2021-2022 school year, the seven priorities that have been addressed through these working groups emerged as issues that RPS needed to grapple with. And those were, as board members and other people in the room are well aware, recruitment, application and selection, induction, how we bring new staff into the organization, evaluation, recognition, staff well-being or wellness and mental health, and then exit interviews. There was actually an eighth that we didn't put on this list because it is very much alive and being addressed through our academic work, and that was professional development and professional learning communities. So that was not a separate group, but that came up again and again as we asked about the effectiveness and well-being of staff. So fast forward to this year, as we've entered the last phase of launching our strategic plan, and we convened working groups, that we invited any staff member in RPS that was interested in these issues to serve on. We had a ton of applicants, and in the end, we were fortunately able to assign everyone who wanted to be on one of these working groups to participate in one of the groups. I want to hugely thank Carl Bachan for his stewardship of this entire process. Carl, of course, has been our HR Executive Director, who's been at the epicenter of these things, and pretty much like every long-term RPS leader who has or is, I'm looking at John as we're in the midst of our funding redesign, led one of these change processes. You face the challenge of running the system as it exists, even as you're engaging stakeholders to say, "How could it be different?" And there's often a tension between those two things, and it's not always easy to bring people together and get candid feedback on the processes that you have led in a different system and paradigm. And so Carl, you have been resilient in looking at some of this feedback, not always super positive, but that's been the case not just with our HR work, it's been the case with our academic work, it's been the case with our work on behavior. And it's a tension that I'm always really glad our leaders are willing to live in. In our structure tonight, because Carl is the keeper of so much knowledge about how our current system works, and certainly looking ahead to future systems, Carl is going to be kind of like our lifeline person. What was the show where you could call on a lifeline? Who Wants to be a Millionaire? Thank you. If one of, and I'll explain our process for tonight in a moment, but if one of your groups wants to ask Carl to come over and join you because you have a question, how does that work? What does, you know, good HR practice necessitate? You can call Carl over, and he will head over to join you, or else you just kind of monitor and float. Otherwise, what each board member has here tonight is the facilitator and members of each of the seven working groups that have just completed their work and submitted a very, very robust set of recommendations. And as I mentioned to board members in the weekly update that I write them every week, this is somewhat unusual, at least for a lot of superintendents I spend time with, because you're hearing directly from these working groups before I have even analyzed and responded to their recommendations. And I think that's in keeping with the spirit of how we've conducted this strategic plan from the outset. If I had a board that I was worried was going to go immediately into the weeds for particular things you wanted to see happen, without recognizing that in the end we have to fit all these pieces together, and we have to make sure we have the funding and the capacity to actually do this in the real world, I would have deferred this session to next fall when I can bring a recommendation that builds on the work of these seven groups. I'm still going to bring that recommendation, but I'm enthused about having board members have the opportunity now, soon after the groups have finished their work, to hear about the ideas and the issues that emerged. And so the goal here is to have a conversation. Board members will be stationary at the table where they are, and you will have a chance to move every 10 minutes, and Ms. Sam, our board clerk, will help us keep timing with that. This computer is Dr. Peter Ruck, right here, who is a bit under the weather. And so when he and I were in a meeting today, I said, "You know, maybe you should do this virtually." And he said, "I think that would be better for all concerned." So thank you, Peter. We will move Peter, and you'll have a chance to move. When you get to your table, please begin with some, you know, introduction so all board members have a chance. Board members have all received the very ambitious written summary of the working group recommendations. Board members may sit down and have immediate questions, or you may want to begin sharing some thoughts about the discussions you had on your group. I will be looking at the extensive recommendations and working with Carl over the summer, and we will schedule close to the start of the next school year, a school board either study session or a regular meeting or both, where I'll present what I conclude is the best realistic way to move this work forward over, for sure, a multi-year strategy. Because as you saw, if you read the report, this is a very ambitious set of recommendations that is going to take some time to implement. But we also know that this is critical for kids, because if our staff can't be their best selves at work, we're not doing everything that we can for students. So with that, Madam Chair, I think that we can jump into our process. And I will say for the handful of folks who are here, we are not going to, we're going to turn off my mic and others and allow these to be table conversations. That's in the spirit of this being a study session rather than a regular meeting, so we can really have those kind of conversations. So any questions or sort of observations on process before we begin the people's, the people's strategy discussion tonight? Hearing none, once we have moved through this conversation, we will come back for a relatively concise, full-group discussion where I'll have the opportunity to just surface a few of the big themes that maybe have arisen, not just for board members but for others who are here. After we take a break between this session and our equally important discussion of a new literacy curriculum, we will pull the tables closer together and go back into our standard format for study sessions. So if Lori gives me the thumbs up, we can jump in right now. All right. Thanks, everybody.
I decided that the question we ask at every table is, if you had to pick one to three priorities, which would you pick?
I would look at the most obvious priority, the genetic factor, which, out of the survey results, was the request for mentors, not just for teachers, but for everyone. And mentors are very aware of the needs of the teachers and their respective challenges. And especially gotten to staff is that while there weren't perhaps mentors, that's maybe teacher mentors, they may not be the same type of person. They may be more as invested in the process of mentors as the members of the district would have liked. And so really having a strong mentorship program, there's a level of accountability. It all sort of issues, and it seems to be very special. Educators and districts, and it seems that everybody has the opportunity to have a mentor, not just teachers.
Wouldn't you say not just teachers, you're taking ESPs? Are you talking even down to maintenance people? Everybody's?
Not that maintenance person on our staff. I don't know if that came out of the survey results as much. Definitely, we have heard through office managers and secretary of staff, they really value mentoring. Definitely heard from members of HR department to how that's a tough job. To me, to me, it's a little bit more, very much a shared experience. And so I think really maybe in those positions, I think perhaps the next steps would be really digging down into a specific job description and exactly what that would be like.
And I suppose also, full-time, part-time would be another factor, too.
So that was, to me, the mentorship program.
Right.
And then I forgot, it was something that was, again, there should be different directions. Communications, that it's wildly, wildly, and also, what are the distribution teams and the site leaderships? And how are those things in concert with one another?
Can you give me an example of that? Because that struck me as something like not familiar with. Like the district versus a building.
Right. So I think what came out the most in the survey was like new teacher training, where there was also working with teachers, what we considered to be really, what that, to be.
From a district-wide perspective?
Okay, so I think we talked, we have had, um, um, I'm trying to think about, you know, our consciousness and expectations of that. And we've had conversations about standards and what we all, just like, what would be a change. And then when you would go to their sites, they were more necessarily championed of the same, at their sites. And maybe they didn't have the same curriculum that was introduced to them at the district. Conversation as they were, at the site, they would see that they have a similar land. Their schools themselves were emphasizing the same topics that we were emphasizing.
So an example also would be when I transferred from Riverside to Mecon. Mecon had the Inside Out program, Riverside didn't. So then I had to get trained in Inside Out because I was able to teach science at Mecon. So the different programs within the schools may cause for different training opportunities.
Even when it's like, you were in fifth grade classroom, so you weren't like an obvious teacher, but you still needed to do that.
Yeah, because we do science differently than the other schools, yeah. And I wasn't a new hire, but I was still a transfer from building to building.
Right.
So I was new to the building.
Right. So also intern transfers. How, so did your group dig down into a simulation? Or is that the communication? Is it communication, or is it even more than that?
More than that, and I think we answered a major territory. Because it's, it's, I think, I was wondering, it came across time and again, understanding what our district values are and whether our sites share or change in the same values. And so, I don't know, down, we're five great, and what our district values are. And what do our boys value, not their resources and documents, but as what all of our decisions are, the sites are focusing on the same thing.
Right. So maybe not just clarity, but also priority.
And I feel like the reason I say we're dancing a little bit outside is some of those things, I feel like maybe they weren't exactly induction, could be roles, but they absolutely are used to talk, from their welcoming into some of what was, or in life.
Do people feel they had a sense of what the building valued? So you said that they didn't for the district, but do they know what their home building valued?
That was a number of sites. And I'm knowing that we weren't directly in the presentation of the other site. I tried to ask for the, for the whole work, we didn't have that. Recognize the people, and then they recognize, certainly skip multiple ones. But in terms of the values of other things, people, they don't know.
So not that they weren't on board with it, it just was unclear.
And that feels big. I think that feels like a really big, a big topic. We have to go with how we go about our induction. So intensely, and don't spread it out, what does this mean? Unless you're overwhelming, right? And thinking about how this works.
Yeah, I definitely agree with that, because I think outside education, you know, you're there your first day, you get overwhelmed, and you think like six months down the line, you're like, "I would, I would gain so much more from that." In the time that you're investing in training, it would be so much more valuable, six months in. I made a note here, and I'm trying to report it here. Oh, the, um, the success indicators, the new hire integrations at a patch and that part of things. What, can you give me an example of what that would look like? Page 15. Is that, it's still your, it's still your guys, yeah? Yeah, I flipped ahead. Oh, that is, okay. Got it. I skipped it. No, I have evaluation the next page. Page 15? Ours are paged differently. Okay, the success indicators for your section. So this one right here.
And is it for the building level community?
Building level community, yes. Yeah. What would be an example of, to help integrate people into community events and that kind of thing? How, what would that look like? How would, how would we carry that?
I think one of the things we talk a lot about is getting feedback from these, from each of those sites. Recognizing that some of the people in the site aren't really the district members. You might just shift them next, so it wouldn't be like that. But really thinking about how to ask our teachers to display how things are going. How are we here? How do we engage with it? And to receive back from our new, our new staff members to see about and recognize who is joining these, who may be building these sites. Because I think there are sites that have plans and opportunities. But if we've looked at who's joining and there's not, there's a lot of interesting data.
Who would you task with being in charge of that?
Time is not. I think it's like, there's a number of things, kind of, that we have to approach at sites. That was something that our goal was to watch.
It was great.
So we are going to shift. We are, we ask the facilitators to rotate to your right. And thank you.
I think they want you to move forward. They should just have like a little thing that slides down, right? She was supposed to take those. Oh, this is... You, you need those. Yes. Which, which evaluation? All right, that's the next page then, yes. We learned, though, that Stephanie's was not faginated the Sims mind, so we might be working off a different place. It is six, yes. Right.
How would you like us to start?
Just fill us in, they give us a high-level summary, and then we'll jump in with questions. Is that okay?
That works.
Our group, we had a wonderful process. SNES, we had my team, ESP. So we have a variety of employers represented, which was nice. We'll be, I'm just, not a lot of employers that are currently going later. So there are holes in our system that we need to address. There's also a new, at a high level, for developing a vision for our process. What is it, what is it trying to get to beyond what it's about? And that's really about seeking understanding through this process. And then really using this as a tool to build constantly, we believe in this. So that's starting from a new level, getting the hiring process pretty fast.
Sure. Um, one of the tools that we use for a large number of our employees is getting our instructional staff, and it's the class tool. We had a lot of feedback on how we improve our practice, the class tool, but I would say overwhelmingly as a group, they felt like the class tool was effective for that classroom construction. But lots of, lots of feedback that we should, how we build in the session development to ensure that there's quality and reliability, so that regardless who has it to do. We're sure we should be having kind of feedback. And that we could be really, have good conversations about what that feedback means and how that transfers into some kind of action and role in the instructional model of the working with students. Conversation about the fact that it's used for anyone under the teaching project, so that includes counselors, nurses, coaches, and all of those auxiliary positions. Which is one of the things that we, we could have served in a, like, the service to show us to use their beds, but it's not really the same things that we would see from a classroom teacher, so thinking about something that would be more meaningful to those groups. And we also talked about scores. Is score important? Can that score have sort of psychological impacts where, you know, we see it, I guess, where someone's family is sitting, have a conversation about, it's kind of sound less, sort of excited on this. So should we continue with the score and the qualitative feedback? Or do we go away from the score and make that a more meaningful and trusting conversation with our teaching staff?
Systematic, or it comes to providing that feedback, some professional development around feedback. You've done a good job of creating that professional, but as a district, maybe that are other supervising, so this is a maintenance league, supervises all the other facilities in the building, but maybe you need professional help about that. So that's a gap.
And finally, I would add that I think, again, with respect to all our teaching staff, we have pretty robust, so they get to write goals about what they want to accomplish here, how they're going to measure it, they're required to get feedback on their state goals. They reflect on the drill here, but not all of our employee groups get to, say, when they feel like their values are, they don't have a right goal. They might not see where a particular position or role fits in the Rochester Public Schools and how our scene is going to be some part of their.
And what other reputation this is important. We want to make sure that there's professional help. So when we get a class, it's called an evaluated now one, so we want to get that. So the evaluation is done, same with teachers. Well, good enough.
And I had something that I, just because I'm not in the district, I don't know how this works. Do the principals and assistant principals, are they fully responsible for the class tool or are there other levels of department heads or supervisors?
There are some director positions. So, um, I would say like our counseling area, special education, they have to share observations. So I might do one, but for our special education teacher, Nicole Miller might do another one, right? So that they're getting feedback from us on the building level, but also because your place is, you know, special at district wide, she'll also come in to make sure that they're aligning with I certainly think that happens to the way you're going to be cabinet members.
Yep, and then, uh, Halla Roman also. I'm sure Halla could better, but she was a principal, so that makes sense. Natalia maybe, I think, is also trained with our ML teachers.
So sometimes it goes through like co-observations, right, together to just for calibration and making sure someone feels like they're seeing things the same way that
And it's every three years or is it every year?
Probationary teachers are evaluated once, I mean, they're in the process, it's a whole process.
That makes sense.
During the process for three years until they receive tenure and the tenure teachers, once, one year on a per three years on a program. And I would say people start up struggling even with the evaluation. We've had talked about that too, as far as trust and what that feeling is when someone's in the institution that it's really We used to call it a professional growth plan. We still sort of refer to it as that, but it's an evaluation that even changes how it feels.
With the recommendation, all employees, we need to have a professional growth plan.
Um, I made a note here to ask for examples of the inconsistency of the implementation of the class tool. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
So there are cases where a building principal may not, there are infrequently, they have, where their executive functioning may not be on, they might, they might get a failure on their observation. So that would be one example.
Okay.
It might be what these officers have to say in the conversation. I know when, when I'm in the classroom, before I leave the observation, I send the teacher a note. Hey, this is a grab observation. Hey, I saw this, this is that really love. Have a poor night, I'm going to stay in the meeting. Here's a couple of questions I want you to think about before you leave, so that you can come in with some reflections. But that's not a case of maybe make that all situations. Somebody has some notes, might do a much better job than that. So those are, listen.
When you said, um, every employee should have an evaluation, was there a frequency attached to that? Is it once a year, twice a year?
There are some groups that don't have any, not from the group, right? But some don't have any. So we have, like, at least some sort of cycle for every single work group. Um, because
There, there's certainly also the consideration of, so any of those things, all of those side jobs, like, so
Yep, we just started to, like, I really, I mean, one of our members said that they feel like there's no evaluation and they, the only time that people might hear from a supervisor is once a year. So that's what we wanted to really make sure we not get away from it, right? So they didn't even get to honestly talk about it. What would that look like as a frequency, which is, that shouldn't be really feedback that exists. And we really did an air, I mean, I said it before, we have, we have certain security, we have certain, we have the internal staff. I don't think that's where, it should be, well, we have a work ethic, we're special, we have any kind of process for, you know.
So you don't think the focus should be on instruction?
No, no, no. I, I, what I, I said, if we're going to focus on, we have a process for instructional staff. It's not perfect as far as evaluation.
You mean for improving the
Yes, like, when we were talking, we, we spent a lot of time because the group was the class of instructional staff and there was, of course, they wanted to talk about teacher program, but we have this, we can sort of work to find this one, but we need to develop it for those who don't have it.
Sure.
Um, so I came in here thinking I would ask a question of all the groups. If you had to prioritize something, what would it be? Would it be, would it be that developing a program for all? And I sort of gathered that giving meaningful feedback might be another higher priority. It's a fast time.
It did go faster. Yeah, thank you too.
Thank you.
The other problem too is It's just not good. Hello, good, well, how are you?
Which group are you? Okay, they are growing in order. Now I know, now I understand.
So this one should be all positive then, right?
Right. Not quite. Tell, tell them what you do.
And I work at Central High School with five students that are, and they are level tiered, high intensive. So they're all, they're long, they're all kinds of, so they all go
Thank you for that. I'm Karen McLaughlin. I'm on the school board. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, we'll ref in a second. Executive Director of Equity and Engagement. That's me as well. So recognition.
My thought to ask each group was if you had to pick priorities, maybe one to three priorities, what would you put in that bucket? Looks like seventeen and eighteen.
Eighteen, okay.
Does it start off with the years of service?
Yes.
Okay. That looks different. No, no.
Year one, we had several lists. On the first list that what we reported was, um, what, what staff wants to be recognized for. This, there is a second list where it was about what, what staff want to be recognized for and how they appreciated receiving that recognition. So some ideas and then we have some recommendations for action.
I don't think we have, I don't, I don't think I have four things.
Okay.
Why don't we start there?
We'd love to tell you about those, and that's kind of a compilation of everything else along with some ideas.
Do you have that?
We, we, it, they are covered in the first list, so we are
Okay, fine, all right.
Yep, absolutely. Years of service would be a great one. That is absolutely one of the, one of the most prevalent requests.
I turned this over and we gradually made, I think, certain questions to some of the teachers and then we got the answer. We were, each of us, um, we worked out about a hundred responses, she wrote down about two hundred, but I would all of them, which is interesting to see what staff would do, something dim-witted, a lot of recognition, which is very, but the number one thing was years of service. I feel the frustration that they just feel like they're hesitant to do something. And some of them, it's just like in their passion, they're being identified and they seem to be getting a lot of recognition. So frustration, they know it's right, they know it's hard, but they just stay in the
And I think if they were to compile, or if we did compile in your report, the data says that thirty percent of our staff don't feel
Five zero.
Actually, across campus, it's all the people who are totally all staff, we took the same About a third of our staff would see, feel very much issue, but over fifty percent of the department would be
Yeah. So help us understand some priorities for solutions to that.
Um, there are different things that they want to be for, you know, recognized for, but then they would also, I worked at another district, I think I brought up, one of the first meetings. We just, they gave us little things and I stuck on my lane and like, I was a favorite challenge, obviously, but that was for one year. So I would just, and then people would see each other and say, oh, that's what I'm doing. So, yeah.
Visible. Yeah, and something you have every day, you know.
Well, yes, not everybody did it, but they just, but this is what I'm doing, but they just want, they weren't asking for tons of money. And some people did, but I think, well, just something, just to, I worked here this long, so they, I remember it.
Do you sense that, it's a, giving century as an example, like at a pep fest or an assembly or some, can they just parade out those twenty year, twenty five year people and?
Yes. Yeah, the number one was, there was just a TV in the spring and they needed cheap air and they, and the, and the, and the And that was put in their invite and it was sent, and, and, but the bus workers, the parents, everybody's, we were the first. And still, yes, yeah, so it was, so that was, and which was acknowledged.
And I know for the district that we invite people to the retirees every year in the spring, but that's here and that's everybody that maybe each building could do their own version of that.
I literally just wrote that down.
One of the things they did say, and we did ask, is why do you want to be recognized by? And the number one response by, like, in general for all staff was quoting in the district level leaders, then followed by colleagues, peers and colleagues, and then third, students and families.
I, and the school board was the bottom, I get it. Yeah. I, I saw that. It's okay. It's okay.
Somebody did answer that, although there were certain questions that one year, the school board, I guess, went on with different schools and observed to visiting concerts and that was a lot of, but I can't say that actually, I mean, we got a lot of, I saw somebody
Just saying, when I get invited out and then some people go, thanks for coming, other people, person goes, why are you here? You invited me. I get it. Right, right.
And I think it's good to have, like, you know, like you say, the invite or, you know, some prior notice that someone's coming, you know, rather than just stopping by. It's kind of more of an alert.
Yeah, but then for me, sometimes it has, it has, it's like, just come. What was for you, just come.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, usually they're every day unless I'm sick.
How about some of these other ones? Positive impact, completion of major initiatives, going to be out above and beyond? Would you find out about those?
Yeah, that was, all of those things were brought up by staff and in enough volume that it made the list of the things that mattered to, mattered to people. Yeah.
Um, and how about the forms of, was there any, um,
Yes.
Like preference of, you know, what was the priority there? What, what, like the most survey respondents, did they?
It was really about being personal. Um, years of service was up there. I think, I think one and two were probably people. I think that two people felt like acknowledgement for years of service really did feel like a district acknowledgement that I continue to show up. Um, in addition to, like we talked about, but the second was that what was really most requested was just a quick note, something personal, something that felt like they were seen for as an individual in a way that mattered to me, which requires our administrators and our one another to know what mattered to you. It's a different level of relationship when you know what really mattered to you or what doesn't matter to you.
Even stopping by, oh, I saw you.
And even when salary wasn't, it was about competitive salaries for advocates. It wasn't about, it was really about a level of acknowledgement for their professionalism, their expertise. Although they did have, the idea came up several times about additional personnel, years of service. So as a potential, we do it, like, we get, I don't know if it's two or three in a teacher contract right now, but what if we hit ten, fifteen, about one more day?
And I kind of think back when, I think it was maybe during the pandemic that I noticed, but my, my son was still in school. And I don't know if it was assistant principal or counselor, you know, mailed him something at home, you know, that that person, it was a personal note to him, you know, that had a lot of impact. I could see that translating well to, to, to staff too.
They still do that too.
Yeah.
Well, thank you too for your time.
Yes, thank you for your work. I can't imagine doing that work. Good for you.
Good for you.
This is Peter, so that's, that's good.
How are you?
Hello.
Hi.
Surprise. So, is our part of the central coordinator? Um, so, we started a little scramble, or you, duct tape, scramble, yeah.
So I think that's here. Right, I. So what I. So we do actually. Yeah. Well, there are. I think we need to. Has. And. And. Um. I. It's our cycle. So. Right, I Facebooked it down and. But they're all. And. About. Don't know that. We are. But so. Okay, that's. Are. So are. I think the idea of. I mean, there was. This is. Maybe you're. First of all, I'm. Yeah. Yeah, they. I love the. Time for. I'm. My. I think yes. Yes. We play. We like the other. I think. So. There. That's not really. Probably. It was a big. We are. Something. There. So. And I. As I said. I said like that. I have a. Um. I just. Oh. All these. And we try. So. We have a. Of course. You. But that. To go. Let's. And we try. Um. I'm. I'm here. So just. So. So. I. No, but we're gonna. So. I. Any. That. Really good. Was your. I. I. A lot of. I. Jackie. I'm. I don't. I don't. And. Now. We. 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 I. Tell me. You guys. And. So. It's. I think. I think. I just. I'm. You know, there's. That's something. You. I. It's. Can you? Oh. That's. That's. There's. The. What? What? No, I mean. I. I. Those. People. Even. But. That's. I know. And. So. And. I. Um. I. I tell. And. So. I. Well. What? What's. 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 We. I. And. If. You. Yeah. Then I. I think. And. And how bad. I. 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 But. That's. We. 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 I'm. Yeah. We had. So. Much. We. Feel. More. Feel. We. Just. And just. Pushing. Our handout is if you were to turn. Step. Handout over to them like you're gonna do a. To build. Adventure. Just. Wait. And. Yeah. Right. This. Inspiration. Is. That. Actually. Want. To. Do. I. Stop. Really. That's. Um. And. All. The. Actually. That's. Which. What's. So. I. So. Yes. So. But again, back and forth. And. And. So. Our. And. Because. Um. The. Great. So. We. We. Time. How. We. Talk. About. Time. We. Have. So. On a. Right. This. Is. I. I. You. Know. Really. I. 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 And. I. Certainly. I. 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 And. I. 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 So. We. 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 I. So. We. Yes. Yeah. Yeah, let's. Cut. So. Let's. Let's. Right. And. I. Um. I. 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 Um. So. And. 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 So. So. But. That was. Actually. The. Wow. It's. Like. I. Um. But. That's. My. But. And. If. We. So. The. And. I. I. So. So. I. And. Students. Which. We're all like. We're. And. 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 So. Is. That. Is. We're. We're. Yeah. That's. The. I. I. Right. Yes. So. I don't wanna be just. Bad. Please. I. The. Yeah. 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 That was. Sure. Yes. Over. They. Don't. So. They. 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 So. So. She. The. Time. Ten. Years. So. Notable. Different. So. So. But. He. 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 Does. Teachers. He. He. As. The. We. We. While. I. And. We. And. And. We have. A. This. Um. That. Well. She. Like. She. Um. And. And. So. Very. Follow. We. That. We. That. Done. Um. In. We. We have. Fresh. And. Yes. Setting. And. We. Talk. And. We. And. Just. Everybody. Like. Probably. Yeah. I. 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 Which. Yeah. I. So. 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 We. 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 That's. Good. Oh. That's. What? I. I. Who. Who. I. 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 And. Even. She. I don't. I. 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 That's. Right. But. Have. Someone. But. I. 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 Me. You. You know. And. And. I. I. We. 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 This. Um. It's. We. I. 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 So. I. 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 Yes. I. 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 Oh. I. 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 That's. I. 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 This. How. This. Seven hundred. But. Being. We. We. Those. And. What. This. Like. What. Like. When. Like. Yeah. That's. That's. Right. Right. And. You. 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 So. Well. There's. And. 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 Oh. Oh. So. I. 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 So. I. I. Right. I. 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 Yeah. You know. I. I. Right. I. 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 Was. How. I. 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 So. 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 Right. Man. 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 Yeah. Right. It's. 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 I. 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 Again. Fidelity. Because. There's. Some. And. So. They. So. So. Yeah. And. So. So. Right. Um. But. It's. About. And. I always say. You. Should. I. 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 And. I. I. Like. Somebody. I. 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 And. Really. Yeah. I. 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 And. He. And. And. Conversation. And. Right. Like. We. Fast. Whatever. I didn't. I. But. Another. All. I. 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 Actually. I. 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 Meeting. When. We. We. Four. Thousand. I. No. Oh. We. Well. I. Maybe. Just. Place. Because. Yeah. I. I would say. But. Sure. Sure. That. Sure, that's, that's. We even think very well. Everybody wants to be. Because we are in our place, so we need to go in. We're like, I don't see this. We're trying to act. You know, so I just, I'm always. But a little bit of that. Re-education. The process of much. Re-education, yeah. Right. So, I probably. That is. I think we could. You know, that's what we say. But we're enough, so. Yes. We're, we're from somewhere else. And I think we're. Thank you. This is how you're seeing. I have more. So. I don't think. Right. And. And this one here, right? I'll make. What is it? Oh, I never. Yes. I know. Yeah. Yes. Right. Yes. Yeah. Um. I was just. I don't. Yeah. Uh. That's all. Yeah. Hi. They got the. Right. 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 Yeah. 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 No. Oh. That's all. Yeah. 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 So. One. Hi. One. Hi. 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 They got the. Right. 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 Yeah. Um. We talked about. Yeah. We kind of need one minute. Maybe. Yeah. Right. 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 She didn't sign up. And I was thinking, oh, this is. I'm. 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 I have a brother. 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 So. You'll be. So. When you, um. We'll do a summary. So. Well, sorry. And we're going to have a summary. We have a special. We're going to have a. We're going to have a. So. Okay. They kind of add. On the. Another option. I think. We have. Wow. Wow. Hi. Maybe. You want. They were. They were. They were. They were. They were. Probably. Yeah. 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 It's like. Yeah. I would. 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 Yeah. Uh. Then you guys. I would. 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 I was. I was. Um. So. I was. Very. Um. I want to talk about. 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 Um. So. Yeah. And I read off. Yeah. So. Um. It's. Okay. So. Um. We. 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 So. We understand. I have. I have. I have. But not as far as our very. They have that. Like. And then. Long. You know. Um. I. 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 How. Play your role. And you have to. To. Like. So. I think that was. A lot of. Like. What you know. And. So. So. For. As. As the other category. And that was. I. To. People. I. I. My. That. And some. On. Some. That. For. For. Some. I. 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 So. We could have. We. Be. A. It's. 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 And. 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 So. So. I can. I'm. 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 Yeah. 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 So. I'm. 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 Yeah. 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 I'm. 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 You don't want to date. No. Cause. Yeah. 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 Oh. Oh. Sorry. Sorry. I need to. I'm. 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 Right. So. The other. And. We. And. We. And. We. We. I've seen. And now. I've made different. I've. 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 So. I. 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 Well, we had. In the past. I. Yeah. In the past. You had. You know. Yeah. So. That. She wasn't. She wasn't. She wasn't. This just. Just. Like. Things that align. Really. And. You know. So. I. So. Um. But. Yeah. I'm. 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 You know. That's.[542.89]
See everybody, but I'm looking forward to hearing how you're going to whittle this down to what we can implement. Director Workman.
And I think I commented on this to at least a couple of our wonderful facilities. The one overarching thing that I really saw throughout this whole stuff, whole thing, was belonging matters, well-being matters. And just as it helps our students to be better academically, knowing that they're prepared for it, that someone understands them, that they feel like they're in a safe place, the same is really true for all of our employees. And I think the other stuff comes from, you know, without crowding somebody, you can do better if you're, you know, your multiple patient table down, when you're on the test, you're fine. You know, so you can learn that, but the whole thing with the trust and everything else, it just kind of provides up. I was excited to see all the excitement from all the people who made it to my table, and I'm sure yours too. And the work was just thorough, and it was an overwhelming project, but I think everybody's gonna do it, and now I do. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be leaving this room feeling a lot of tonight. So, thank you.
Director Garcia.
I took apart those of you, I think almost every group, reported their desire for recognition. So I want to say thank you, Anita, and Connie, and Eric, and Carrie, and Stephanie, and Cassie, and Sarah. Lindsay, Carrie, Denise, the work that you did was...
She did it.
I'm still reading your part of the document. Thank you so much for this. I think this is great information, and I feel so privileged to be able to have you do such incredible work, and for us to just sit here and be the recipients of all of this passion and creativity and hard work that you do. So I appreciate you and all of the people that you work with, and I hope that you, if they're not watching, that you will share out that information to them. This was great. Thank you so much.
Director Cook.
Well, my lodestar always is what's best for students, and I think tonight, this was a great lesson in the importance of recognizing that all of our staff are professionals, and they have many ways that they want to continue to develop and be recognized and be given the instruments to develop in their professionalism. And so, that came through to me. Thank you all for the work. I think it's really exciting. Thanks.
Director McLachlan.
Started taking on what Director Workman was talking about, that our group, the very first thing we talked about with our first group was how do people feel? And that's what we talked about throughout all the other groups, and particularly with our last group, with the staff wellness and mental health. So I appreciate that as a theme throughout the discussion, and also really appreciate the honesty and the feedback that we heard, that I think that that's gonna go a long way in analyzing this information. So thank you.
I think I'd also like to acknowledge that we heard from a number of groups that the feedback that was given, both in the survey and in other ways, was at times very hard to hear. So I agree with Director Workman that there's a lot to feel good about from this effort, but it came from people sharing their difficult issues and how they feel about being in the district, and the people of these groups, you know, wading through that and reading it and processing it. So I think it's okay to get critical constructive feedback, and I credit the team for wanting that so that we can grow and be better from it. So I know that that was also a little bit of a psychic process and toll on you as well. So thank you for wading through that, too. Director Workman.
Yeah, I think that the whole dealing with the difficult issues and the things that were hard to hear is really a reflection of the kind of trust that is being built in the district as a whole, because you're not gonna share something with somebody, especially if it is constructive criticism, if you don't feel that there is that trust there. So just building on what you said, I'm just, I'm just really excited about the potential for all of this being reported. It was just awesome. Thank you.
Any else? Board members? Superintendent?
No, I just want to once again, not just thank Carl, but his whole small but mighty team. I think, what do you have, four people who are directly managing the hiring process? And they will hire, what, Amy, 500 people for summer of discovery? That's more than many employers hire in a whole year, and they are about to do it for just our summer of discovery. And so that, it's a small but mighty team, and that, as Peter Ruck was saying in our discussion with him, is objectively woefully understaffed, if I'm quoting him directly. So thank you for not just what you've done, but what we're gonna be doing over the next few months as we get ready to bring a strategy back to the board and the school district community.
So I think we can let our team members go, or you can stay and watch the rest of the meeting, your choice, but we are gonna reconfigure the room.
Yeah, we're just gonna, people can take a break, board members can stretch, and we're gonna move some chairs to the outside, and the literacy team is welcome to come and grab a chair that's open. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair Nathan. I want to actually start out, even though we have nameplates and things like that, just to ask colleagues who are here from the working group or committee that did the deep work we're gonna be talking about to introduce themselves, what's your day job? And then we will jump into the conversation, or what's your role in the district is probably a better way to put it than your day job. So I will leap over our board members and colleagues in the cabinet, and Heather, maybe you can get us started.
Heather Herman, and my role in the district is as a fourth grade teacher at Falwell.
And Heather Claveter, Director of Elementary Academics.
Gretchen Ocasio, Coordinator of Project Management.
Jared Greeler, Principal at Overland Elementary.
Ryan Gatch, I A teacher straight up Amber Valley.
Breann Morris, I'm a multilingual language teacher at...
Danielle Wilson, Literacy Culture Center.
So, board members, you are aware that on one hand, this is the culmination of a longstanding effort, and on the other, it has been an effort that has taken place and continues to take place under a very tight timeline. Shortly after I got here to Rochester in the summer of 2021, I would be visiting our elementary schools, and teachers would occasionally pull me aside and say, you know, we have a big gap. And I would say, what gap? And they would say, the curriculum gap. We do not have a high-quality-aligned curriculum in literacy. And after I'd had enough teachers make that case to me, began to start to ask about that reality. And up to this point, it really has been true. And that's why I think that the recommendation that I'm putting before you tonight in Prep for Action and for the Action category is something we needed to do anyway in Rochester Old Schools. But a funny thing happened along the way to this moment, which is that the state of Minnesota also got focused on what we are now mostly calling structured literacy. And as board members know, and as we described in a recent update, the REED Act is putting in place far-reaching change in the way we teach not just our youngest learners to read, but also our middle and high school students. It's not only gonna impact curriculum, but professional development, frequent assessment, eventually summative assessment. And so, it's a huge, sweeping, comprehensive change that I'm proud to say, from the perspective where I sit, we really are leading in many respects. We're playing catch-up compared to some districts that have been at this longer, but I think thanks to the people around this table, we are making fast progress. So when the REED Act was passed, the opportunity that we now are asking you to help us seize is the approval of a curriculum that meets the requirements that the state of Minnesota set for partial reimbursement of the cost of that curriculum. But to be clear, while that, especially in our current financial situation, is not an insignificant benefit, it's not the only reason we're here. It's here because, of course, we know that we've learned a lot over the last several decades about how young people learn to read. And so, the presentation that you're gonna get now, which I think is very much sufficient to provide you with the information that I hope you feel you need to vote to purchase this curriculum at our next meeting, is still incomplete, that this is a work in progress, that there are a number of issues that we know we're gonna have to continue to work to address. Because one hard conclusion, not just of our team's work that you're gonna hear about now in Rochester, but of the University of Minnesota's work and the many advisory groups that the state has convened, is there is no perfect curriculum, and you always have to supplement, and we're always gonna be supporting teachers in adapting the needs of the curriculum to meet the needs of their students. So we are asking for a near-term decision so that we can not only seize the partial funding that would be forthcoming from the state of Minnesota, but frankly, so we can put this into motion, so we can get these materials to our teachers and provide them with the professional development that they need and deserve to use these materials and the time to collaborate with colleagues and begin the implementation in the very near future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Heather. And as board members know, while we won't be asking you to vote tonight, we are very much hoping that we can do so in the next regular board meeting. And so if there are particular pieces of information that you feel are critical for you to have as you are making that decision in the next meeting, because our timelines are tight, please be blunt and let us know what you need to know so that you can make this decision at the next regular board meeting. Heather?
So Chair Nathan and members of the board, we're so excited to bring forward our recommendation for the structured literacy curriculum for elementary schools. We've already gone through introductions for those that are at the table with us tonight. I also want to introduce our Office of Academics literacy team, who is also here tonight, sitting over there. We have Allison Crinkie, Rebecca Mchukowski, and Danielle Canole, who are here and very, very deep in the work in the Office of Academics as well. So these who are with me tonight, along with this long list, and there are quite little names up there, but they did big work, all of these people were part of the process of studying and gathering perspectives from their sites, and, you know, really digging into the curriculums that made the list to determine what we feel is best for our school district. So we thank all of their work. And I did think it was important that I share with you also that as we were convening this team, many who have been a part of this work for more than this year, we really made efforts to make sure we had that diverse representation from many different areas. So we had, you know, general education teachers, special education, multilingual learning teachers, along with the Office of Equity and Engagement, and of course, the Office of Academics, and also principals who were a part of the group. So we had lots of voices to explore all of the options and to really make choices for all of the learners that are in our classrooms. So tonight, this is just our quick agenda. I'll go ahead and share a little bit more about the MDE process. I think Dr. Pikel has already given us a nice overview of that. Then we'll talk about the process that we went through as a team as we studied the curriculum, and then we'll get to our recommendations, the reasons for them, and then, of course, the funding. So that's where we'll be tonight. So just a quick overview, I know that you have seen our literacy plan as well, so this is clearly outlined in there, the REED Act. So in the REED Act, MDE partnered with CARRY, and they selected, the goal was at least five curricula that were evidence-based for us to review. And of course, when they gave the list of curriculum in January, it wasn't a requirement that we select from that list unless we were wanting to get that reimbursement. And we are, we're wanting to, of course, access the funds that are going to be available through the state. So we did lean into that list that they provided that I will be showing you briefly. And then, just so that you know the statute in there that says, starting July 1st, 2023, any district that is purchasing literacy curriculum materials must be purchasing materials that are considered evidence-based, as defined by the state of Minnesota. And of course, the ones that made the list definitely meet those requirements. Just a brief overview of the terminology you'll see as we look at the curriculums that they did put on the list. And I put up there the Scarborough's rope that I'm sure you've seen before, and tried to do a little color coding for you to outline the different programs that are out there for curriculum. So in the blue, it's very, very tiny, but that's the word recognition section of the skills that students need to be taught. So those decoding area, phonemic awareness and phonics, all of those pieces are considered foundational skills, and there are curriculums that are written specifically to address those skills, and so those would be under the category of foundational skills programs. Then in the red, which is the upper part of the rope, as we call it in our trainings, that's really the language comprehension part. That's the knowledge building, talking about language structure, verbal reasoning, and all of those pieces are on the top part of the rope. And those curricular programs are referred to as knowledge-building programs in the state's recommendations. And then finally, in the black, we have the comprehensive programs that would really embody all that's in Scarborough's rope, all of those pieces put together into those comprehensive programs. So I just wanted to define that, because that is how the state then listed the selections. The other thing I wanted to highlight is the state's process for selecting the curriculum, which was an extremely deep dive and study based on the evidence that is backed by the science of reading, of course. And I just wanted to share this with you, because we really leaned into what the state provided for us, because they did such deep work in analyzing the curriculums. So the first step they looked at was basically just answering these questions to determine if the curriculum would move on or not. So they asked the question, has the most recent version been reviewed by Ed Reports? Is it an evidence-based curriculum based on the MDE definition? Does it exclude reacquing systems that have been in past resources that are not evidence-based? Is it systematic and explicit instruction included? Does the curriculum provide materials that are culturally and linguistically responsive? Does it support multilingual learners and students receiving special education services? And then, does it systematically build knowledge? So all of those pieces are really important, and that was the first step. So if they said yes to those categories, then they would move into the rubric that they created, based on a lot of the research that they did as well. And so these are the areas of the rubric that they rated these curriculums in. The global area is just kind of about the design for students and for teachers, the usability, and then all the other areas. You see assessment there, and then the other areas I've mentioned are parts of that Scarborough's rope that needed to be, you know, represented within the curriculum. And then we also have the part that's cultural responsiveness. I did include a link, in case you wanted to check that out, to the MDE rubric, so that you could get a look at that as well, if you were interested to see that. So we were not given access to the ratings of the curriculums. However, we did have a little bit of information through CARRY as far as where they scored in certain areas, but we didn't get the full rubrics for the curriculums. So these are the curriculums that made the list. We had three foundational curricula. One was magnetic reading, specifically for K through two classrooms. Then we had UFLI through the University of Florida, which is K-2 curriculum. It's also a curriculum that our reading specialists currently use. And then it was the University of Minnesota's Functional Phonics and Morphology, which is a K-5 foundational curriculum. And then a knowledge-building curriculum made the list, and that is Witten Wisdom through Great Minds. And then there was one comprehensive curriculum that was added to the list, and that's EL Education Open Up. And so with that information, our team then started to dig in to the curriculum that were recommended. And so, our team is going to be talking about the processes that we followed to study them more.
So the review process was that team that you saw on the earlier slide, and we started by gathering input and looking at the data. We looked at the MDE ratings through CARRYI, and then we did also look at our FastBridge data in the district. One of the things that we found, that we felt was most important, was to reflect what our teachers thought about what they were already using. So we gathered input from our K-2 teachers about their current resources, because they had put a lot of time and effort into learning and studying those curricula and using them with students. We also gathered some community input from the Community Curriculum and Instructional Advisory Board as well. We examined and explored the offerings that we had. Some of those were, we had samples of the books and the teacher copies as well. We had presentations live and also through webinars from each of the vendors that you saw on the previous slide. We had group discussions, and then also lots of time for us to reflect as individuals. There was also an open house for the elementary school teachers, educators, to come in and see the materials that we had on hand. We also had a chance to connect with some different, some different people in different districts that have already used these curricula. In Roseville, we had a really great video chat, which was really nice, because we could ask questions specifically. The same with some educators in Madison. North French was a small group visit, and they were actually able to see some of this in action. And then UFLI, as Heather said, is being used by our interventionists at this time. So our team focused on recommending a cohesive curriculum that would include everything that we know is best for our students, evidence-based foundational components, and a background knowledge-building curriculum. It became apparent that when we looked at the list from MDE, that while we liked many aspects of the EL education, it really didn't meet the needs of our students for foundational areas. And it gave, it gives partial, a partial rating for phonics, phonemics, and then also morphology. The colleagues that we had spoken to that had implemented EL, they said that they really felt that they needed to supplement the functional parts of the curriculum. And then, based on our study, and really thinking about the needs of our students, we decided that it was really important that we adopt the K-2 and 3.5 foundational curriculum, because we needed, and then also the K-5, a K-5 knowledge-building curriculum. We needed those two pieces together to really meet the needs of our students.
So based upon all of that information, listening to the survey that the K-2 teachers had did, we decided that we would like to, for K-2, for the foundational skills, keep RGR and HEGARDY. And it's for these reasons, is because, well, the data showed that, the survey, that we are just in year three of it, and we're just really starting to get into it, and we've had all these literacy labs to kind of help support it as well. We also noted that on our FastBridge data, K-2 students were showing progress in literally, so that they are making growth. And then also that we noticed that RGR is also adding additional instructional components that could help us even further make growth in our students. In the future, we would like to try to pilot functional phonics and morphology for K-2, and maybe have the, some teachers pilot magnetic reading, which is one of the comprehensive programs, but it's only for K-2.
And so for 3.5, we would really like to recommend adopting functional phonics and morphology. So it is listed up there as a K-5 curriculum. The great thing is... The great thing is when you purchase this, while we're purchasing it for our 3.5 Tier One, we do have access to the K-5 materials. It is very comprehensive, it's evidence-based, all those things that we're trying to check the boxes for. For the K-2, it follows a logical progression of phonics. And we know that that helps students with their reading, with their spelling skills. And then the 3.5 component is more based on the common layers of language that make up English. So there's three series. There's the first series, which is like Anglo-Saxon language parts, like prefixes, suffixes. And then it moves into your Latin roots, which is kind of like your, we call them Tier Two vocabulary words, right? Like those are your more technical words. And then it moves into the Greek roots, which is more like your science-based words. So it really is explicit, and it's a huge need. The last bullet point says, you know, there's an urgency for the systematic instruction. We've had K-2 foundational skills, but the 3.5 also needs those foundational skills. When I think about, from a multilingual standpoint, we know that explicit vocabulary instruction is good for all kids, but it's absolutely essential for our language learners, right? To give them access to content vocabulary, to access to the content areas. The other thing that I love about this from a multilingual standpoint is every lesson, every day incorporates all four language domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. So we talk about getting our kids to use academic talk. This is a great way to do that. So I'm really excited to recommend this.
And then for our knowledge-building recommendation, we would suggest K-5 Witten Wisdom. We saw that there was lots of rigorous learning. And so if you think about the curriculums that they were just talking about are the bottom half of Scarborough's rope around word recognition, Witten Wisdom provides that top half of the rope for language comprehension piece. They have strong module topics that have a nice span K-5 for a broad scope and sequence that will help students dig deep into different knowledge areas, deepen their understanding. And like you said, there's lots of reading, writing, speaking, and listening throughout every day as you work through it. We also felt that when we were talking with Roseville, the teachers mentioned how strong the writing part of Witten Wisdom is. And so it's exceptional to hear that because that's an area that I feel like we've really, really been asking for specifically too. So I think that that will be great for our students. As well as when we were looking at the options, this has a strong alignment kind of with K-2. So you have your Witten Wisdom, which is your top half of the rope. You have really great reading, kind of working here at the bottom half of the rope. And then the G.O.s that we already have as well kind of build through and tie everything together as they go. And as was mentioned before, we really had a strong desire for that vertical alignment. If you have a curriculum K-5, there's lots of common knowledge, common language that goes with that. And plus the scope and sequences I mentioned then can be much deeper than if we're picking and choosing different pieces and trying to put it together. One of the pieces we also liked was the family connections and how it shares exactly what we're working on. Talks about different books that are reading and then gives connections of things that families can do related to those topics to go even deeper at home with their students if they prefer. And then we also noted that Witten Wisdom compared to EL, this one would fit, have a more desirable fit into the instructional minutes of our school day. And so that was kind of one of the things that we looked at. And I know that some have already mentioned that before, but the navigation of both the paper, the digital, the online platform for Witten Wisdom was much more easily accessible to somebody even just looking at it for the very first time than EL, which came with about four textbooks per module that you would have to have out each day, which seemed very complicated and challenging.
So this slide kind of puts it all together so that you can see. So we're recommending that we continue for the foundational curriculum for K through two. We continue with really great reading and HEGERTY, which do follow structured reading. They are components that were rolled out in about 2020, and it was a tricky time. But our teachers are really feeling strongly that they're making progress with that. So that would just be continuing what we currently have. And then the purchases would be foundational. 3.5, we would purchase functional phonics and morphology. And then the knowledge-building curriculum would go K-5, and that would be Witten Wisdom.
Kind of one of the byproducts of this whole conversation was, regardless of the curricula that we buy, professional development is going to be a very important part of this. So really a discussion around kind of that commitment to prioritizing strong professional development to make sure that we continue on the path that we've been doing already with LitLab and really developing our teachers, but even stronger professional development around what the curriculum is. And then also that planning time, because that's one of the things that, anytime you adopt something, there's the learning about it, but then there's also the, how am I going to implement this in my classroom? What's that part going to look like? So we had lots of conversation around kind of going slow to go fast within that. How are we intentionally planning things and setting teachers up for the most success in their classroom? Because whenever we purchase a curriculum, there's also that chance of, are people going to use it? And one of the best ways to make sure that people use is if they feel confident in it through our strong professional development as well. One of the next steps that's going to happen is really digging into some of the books that are in the new curriculum. And there's not going to be a perfect curriculum where we might not have to supplement or supplant or do those sort of things either. So really looking at where are the holes, where are the gaps? What might we need to write in there? And really working at the Office of Equity and Engagement to make sure that we have texts within our curriculum that represent all of our students within it. And then also looking at, you know, teachers love to get things in their hands as soon as possible. So how can we get things into their hands? Even do a possible curriculum launch this spring or summer? So that way people could, teachers could start looking at things prior to back to school when their minds are on many things, including the wonderful kids that are going to be coming through the door in the next week. So how do we get things to them ahead of time?
Yes, so the million-dollar topic here. We're recommending to move forward with a three-year contract for the Materials and Access for Witten Wisdom. And I'm focusing on Witten Wisdom because that is the biggest purchase for the curriculum. By doing a three-year contract, we're seeing some benefits in a couple of ways. One is the publisher is giving us deeper discounts for all of those materials. And then we're also going to see fixed pricing as we get into year two and year three. And without that, we really don't know, you know, what the inflation is going to drive those prices to. The initial adoption year for Materials and Access is really the bulk of what this number is. It's going to include the teacher editions, all of the print bundles, the online platform access for the educators' cortex copies, and then the student materials as well, which includes all of their cortex and their edition modules that they use in hand. And then the online platform access for students as well. And so all of those would be for this first year. Continuation costs, as we would see into year two and year three, would cover the online platform access for teachers, the online platform access for students, as well as the student edition modules that would need to be delivered each year. And so that's where we're seeing the fixed price and the deepest discounts by doing the multi-year. Oh, one other note. So we did find funding sources for this through the ESSER, which is the COVID funds, and the Literacy Incentive Aid to cover this purchase with an eye towards what we're also going to be getting through the REDACT for continuation of the plans.
So we're ready for any questions that you may have?
I'll start at the end, if that's okay. I think I only have three. I'll try to keep it that way. So on the finance part, what about the costs on the other curriculum that is being recommended? Is there also a one-time purchase for that? And the board will approve purchase of the 3.5 curriculum for functional phonics?
Functional phonics is really just site licensing that we're needing to purchase. And it falls well below the threshold of the school board approval process, which is good. So yeah, I think that that would just be a separate process that...
And I love the idea of an initial fixed cost. Is that, are there caps on the number of students? Like if somehow enrollment spiked next year, would we need to? I mean, is there a per student or something for consumables or whatever?
So for consumables, they have it bundled in a couple of ways. They do the online licenses per student and per teacher. And those were estimated based on the staff projections and the section projections, I believe, as of March of this year. And then as far as for some of the student edition modules, I believe that they are bundled. So we would order up a section. Do I have that correct? And so the publisher's been really good about working with us on pricing. And so if we have to add some additional sections based on enrollment numbers, they would work with us on that and either give us a buffer on the platform access or estimate a small purchase for any additional print materials.
Love it. For the interplay between really great reading and HEGERTY and starting in grade three, the functional phonics and morphology, I mean, as part of the evaluation, was the sense that the scope and sequence of really great reading that would feed into the third-grade level functional phonics appropriate? Are there some gaps that would, the team anticipates would need to be filled in some way?
You could go ahead, Dan.
I was just going to say, so I think the nice part about, you've got kindergarten through second grade that'll have really great reading. And the goal is that most kids would, if their tier one instruction is strong and solid, most kids phonetically would be where you'd want them to be roughly there. And so then they move into the morphology piece, where you start to break words into prefixes, suffixes, and using that instead. And so that's what the 3.5 piece of the functional phonics and morphology does. But the nice part about the purchase is that it allows us to access all of the K-2 pieces, which right now 3.5 doesn't have access to. So if you want, I know you have students that are still missing those phonetic skills from maybe first grade or second grade, you can access that in the scope and sequence of the functional phonics and morphology for that grade level and support those students in like a tier-two set with that if you wanted to. Does that make sense?
As a third, fourth, or fifth grade teacher, you'd have the ability to kind of backtrack, to access all of those materials.
That is helpful. And then, I'll circle it.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say, and like sometimes when we look at our FastBridge assessment, sometimes you see a class-wide gap or a class-wide need. So I think our 3.5 teachers have been struggling because it's like, well, I've got to create something to teach this phonics skill that is covered in the K-2. And now our 3.5 teachers have access to materials to fill in whole group instruction if needed, if you needed a targeted class-wide instruction.
And I was just going to add on that really great reading with some of the words and things they have in there. You can introduce some of the prefixes and suffixes already. So they're kind of getting that knowledge and that vocabulary already built in when they get into the morphology part.
That's great. And then my last question, always dangerous for me. For our English language learners, and I'm so glad that our multilingual team was represented here, or maybe even more specifically for Spanish immersion, actually. What, if anything, would the adoption of this curriculum enable for the implementation of structured literacy practices for students that are not learning in English? Was that a consideration for this team, or is there anything you can share on that?
So hopefully I'm answering this as one of the representatives. But, you know, I think like when I've done my pull-out groups, like I do a lot on morphology, right? Like you have to teach kids how to break apart words. You have to help them get meanings from words versus simply decoding. And so I feel like giving all kids this as a tier-one instruction will help kids with their language development, right? Like you're teaching them vocabulary, you're teaching them how to use these words in context. They're talking about it, they're writing it. So as an ML teacher, I guess I'm really excited about that. I can't speak to Spanish immersion. I know Overland, just in our ML program, we have 17-plus languages represented it. So I think giving just, again, that universal instruction in English of how to break apart words, what do the parts of the words mean, and infusing all four of those language domains was a huge strength of this curriculum. This, I don't know if you guys remember from the first slide, but it is based out of University of Minnesota, it's part of the CARRY. So it's definitely evidence-based, and they looked at multiple groups of learners to, you know, make sure it's effective.
And as far as Spanish immersion goes, they are still digging into curriculum options. What we found and what was on the list from the state is they did not have a Spanish version. And I know they're moving to that dual model, and so they would like the same curriculum. So they're looking for one that would provide that Spanish version and English version together. So they're still working on that as a separate curriculum discussion.
Got it. Well, I'll stop because I know we have other members of the board that are very interested in this. But I just wanted to share that more than anything else, this is why I wanted to run for the school board and did this crazy thing where I subjected myself to public scrutiny in terms of emails and all the rest, because I really think this is the big opportunity for our school district. And thank you so much for leading this work. It is transformative, it's going to be tremendously impactful. And because I get so excited about the opportunity to improve and to change our practices in this area, I probably don't do enough of recognizing that we have been providing really high-quality literacy instruction for a long time in pockets. But we haven't been able to do it at scale and in a coherent way. And so if I was in a position to provide the sales pitch for why this is not another exercise in checking boxes and why this is not the latest example in the legion of examples of, you know, in education, sort of structures being forced down on teachers that there's more forms and so on that they need to fill out, it is that we need, we recognize that there are lots of different ways to provide high-quality literacy instruction, but we need to have a common language in our district for how it's done well here so that new teachers, when they join our district, can talk to experienced teachers about the exact same thing that they're trying to implement in their classroom. We need everybody to get on board and adopt this and just become the best place in the state to learn how to read. So anyway, thank you so much. I'm really excited about it. I can't wait to vote on it, even though I'm not going to be here in present. But maybe that'll be better for everyone because I probably will confine my comments. Thank you.
So I have a question about this three-year contract. What happens in year four?
So in year four, we could look at doing a continuation bid or package with them where we would still be leveraging all of the materials that were purchased in year one. But then it's just the continuation cost of if we want to continue with some of the printed consumables, if we want to continue with some of the online access for teachers and students. So the bulk of the initial investment here is going to stay with the district. And the continuation costs would then, beyond year three, be estimated and negotiated and considered again at that time.
I'm going to be Johnny One Note on this for the next six months. That is why we must pass a referendum. We have carefully sequestered this fund, these funds, to make this possible. We also have a group of teachers that has done similarly great work in science. And I'm not going to bring you a recommendation for that curriculum purchase because we can't pay for it right now. We have not adequately resourced curriculum review and purchasing and updating in this district. It's something we have to think through through our rethinking funding strategy. But we can't do that without the resources. So I think Director Cook, you just said it well. And Director Workman, I really appreciate the question. The level of quality that we are recommending and that I hope you will approve is, I believe, what Rochester families want for their kids. We cannot sustain it without a referendum. Full stop. So it's that. We will be able to do it for three years, but we will need... Now, would we stop teaching reading? No. But we would go back to where we've been, which I think you just described well. Episodic, not systematic, not rooted in the best current materials. And so this is, all of... And so this is, all of the positive things are true, but we do face a cliff that we will need to begin planning for now.
Director Brown?
Excellent presentation and, and thank you so much. Quality and sustainability, thank you, Dr. Akell, for your comments. I did visit the Witten Wisdom website earlier and did notice that they have both printable and digital format options available. Were we necessarily, were we leaning in a particular direction, combination of the two, or either or, or teacher preference?
We're looking at both. Yep, so the teachers will have access to that teacher's edition and the, the whole platform that provides the slides and videos in a kinda easy-to-use format. But we also will be getting the, the paper teacher editions as well because we know that when they are teaching, it's nice to have that in hand as well. So that's the plan.
And then it was on slide seventeen, family connections, tips for reading at home with children. What would that look like? I'm, I'm curious, as I, I was kinda intrigued by, by that statement. What, what would that look like?
Within the curriculum, it's called like a family tip sheet or something. And so every module has like overarching questions. And so what the curriculum has done is created these guides that kids will then take home to their families. And it will just talk about what are we reading about? What are questions you can be asking your kids when they're reading at home? What are places you could visit that are connected to the content you're learning about? So it kinda gives that guide as well. But that, that's basically what it is. It's a, it's a handout to get parents engaged in it. Of course, we're also developing some of those parent tips as part of our, our literacy plan as well and hope to have that on our website. That we'll be building in other background information about structured literacy and what else they can be doing. But within Witten Wisdom, that's what's provided.
Thank you.
Board members? I wanna ask that question about one of the comments on RGR integrity, the feedback from the teachers. Additional instructional components have been added that teachers would like to maximize. Are there additional purchases with RGR integrity that we need to make or?
No. Excellent question. Really Great Reading, when they got their feedback is what I understand because we've been talking with them, because they originally didn't make that approval list. And so through the process, if you don't originally make the list, MDE has said some people didn't submit enough or they needed to build in other resources. And so RGR took their list and they're building in some additional resources for teachers to be utilizing, which actually our literacy team is working on a training just for this month for K two teachers to tap into some of that. So when we reached out to RGR, they said they are, they have resubmitted. However, on the MDE site, it says they haven't, but they have resubmitted to be accepted for that. But those are not additional purchases. But we do have a recurring amount that we're paying every year to continue with RGR. Haggerty comes in the form of a booklet, like a teacher's guide that they use. So we don't have to be purchasing that every year. If you wanted to know some of the specifics, when we first started RGR at the beginning of the year, it did not have like videos for kids to watch, guest teachers kinda teaching them some of the skills. So that was kinda added, just new this year, they added like a handwriting slash writing component. That was brand new, that all of a sudden it's like, oh, we have a handwriting video, which the kids really were into. And also with Really Great Reading, there's the playground, the reading playground, which is games and skills that kids are very involved and entertained. And it's wonderful also to get another kind of assessment or feedback on how kids are doing.
Okay, another question about the, when you looked at the FastBridge literacy data and to date, when we've gotten literacy data, it's been very high-level in terms of how our kids are performing. Can you say that, are there specific areas of literacy that we're seeing patterns of in our district that, you know, for some reason, a lot of our kids aren't getting this? Or is it across, across the board? Because it sounds like this curriculum covers everything across the board. But if we're seeing a pattern of an area, you know, strand or benchmark or something that's specific, do we have the capability to pile on and focus on that?
So how FastBridge is, is set up, it's going to give us general information and then it links students with individualized areas that they may need more work in. And if a class, like a class of twenty-five or whatever, if they, if the majority of them are showing a need in phonics, for example, that comes up on FastBridge as we should do a class-wide intervention. And so that's kinda how it rolls out. So I wouldn't say like district-wide that we would say this is the area of phonics that we need to work on. So we've been looking just at, at the growth, right? Like over time. I know that just at Jefferson last year, we saw second grade was really showing more growth than other grades. And we were asking a lot of questions about why? Why are we seeing more growth in this area? And we had, we were saying, wait a minute, let's think about this group of students. They actually started at a time that we had structured phonics and phonemic awareness in those K and one grades. And so that was like the promising data that we saw. So it was trending up in K two. So that's kinda how we looked at it overall in literacy, that we were seeing progress. And of course, teachers, we know curriculum, as you roll it out, you need some time to really get to those outcomes. And so we're kinda at that point where they've had it about three years. One year was COVID. So we really think if we continue building it, that that, that's the direction we'll be going.
One last question, the family engagement piece. You talked a lot about the professional development for the teachers. Do we have a plan to do a formal rollout of information to parents before the beginning of the year to let them know what they can expect with their children's literacy experience and access to these family tools, et cetera?
Yes. It's not built at this time, but definitely that will be something on our list that we'll wanna make sure that parents are informed about all the components of literacy. So yes, that will be coming.
I think we have some great opportunities for that with step into learning when we get those individual, you know, conversations with our families to start the year to kinda set everyone up for success as well. I think that that's a great time to, to roll some of those things out, you know, personally to our families also, so.
So a little administratively, we have a resolution that will, that will be asked to approve at the next meeting. And it says, approve the purchase of K five Witten Wisdom and three, five functional phonics and morphology. Are we going to include the dollar value of that one, one point three? So that resolution or is there a flexibility we need?
For functional phonics and morphology, that was not included in this specific resolution just because it does fall so far below the threshold. This, this resolution is specific to the Witten Wisdom adoption and the three-year, multi-year contract.
Let me just say, if you'd like us to add that.
Well, it's, it's two things, right? One is approving the curriculum, one is approving the purchase. That's, yes.
Yeah, well, if you want us to add the dollar figure to the resolution, we could definitely do that.
Okay. Thank you.
I, if I can, Madam, I just wanna thank you all. It's, it's so energizing to be around great teachers and great principals and a great project manager. Now, the work that you all have done, as Heather knows, I, you know, they, they described this as their recommendation, which I actually love. But I certainly had, you know, with Heather and with Dr. Agbamu, many conversations. I was kinda pulling for EL education for quite a while. And we had a robust discussion about continuing to use Really Great Reading, integrity and sort of where we've had, but also the benefits, benefits of a coherent aligned curriculum. So I know I wasn't at your meetings, but I was sort of keenly observing the discussions that you were having and I can't thank you enough. I, I saw her names, I'll just call her out. Paula Sherman was the first person who highlighted for me the absence of three to five resources. But many others have said it since then. So you all have been kinda true believers and trailblazers in this. So thank you for this work and thanks to the board for, I hope, helping us take this quantum leap next week at your meeting.
I think it's also exciting to see you excited about this curriculum. I'm hearing it from some of the people we've seen at the Learning Lab too because I know, as the superintendent has said, this has been a conversation for a long time. And we're glad that it's coming from the experts in the classroom who are going to use it. And so everybody who participated in the process really does deserve recognition because I feel like we're hearing it from, I'm not a teacher, so I, I'm confident that we're hearing it from the experts. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you so much. Board members, you all good? Just keep going, they may need a break. Let's go. So item five point one is the school board evaluation process and tools discussion. So board members, you know that we conduct a self-evaluation and goals every year. And tonight is the first step in that process where we're going to establish the tools and the process and the timelines for what we're going to do for our evaluation of 2024 and our goal setting for 2025. So the last time we had this conversation, people were generally comfortable with the MSBA self-evaluation. But that's the first thing that we wanna confirm is that we'd like to move forward with that. It's not that there's a lot of other options that are available to us. But that's sort of the first step. If anybody really objects to moving forward with the evaluation, we should know that before we move forward in this, in this discussion. I'm not hearing any, so that's good. But the last time we did talk about this, board members did have some concerns about their ability to answer the questions accurately because A, they didn't have as much information as they wanted before they answered some of the questions. And B, some of the questions, they wanted to make sure that board members were all seeing the same way or understanding the question the same way so that the results are really an accurate reflection of the evaluation. And that was that document that I sent you before the meeting that outlined the questions and had some examples of the kinds of information that you could be provided or you could access before the meeting. So I'm just wondering if it would be easy just to go standard by standard and see if anybody has any comments or items to add on any of the questions, either in terms of information you might wanna see before we complete the evaluation or any just clarification of questions. So we'll start with standard one. Any of those first questions, three through twenty-one?
Director Workman?
Yeah, so on, on number fourteen, collaborate with colleagues across the region, state, or nation regarding current and emerging trends, issues, and policy solutions. What does that really look like? I mean, what are we understanding that to mean? That we attend a national conference or the, you know, collaborate?
Director Garcia, is that hand in response to that comment or?
I mean, it could be, I think it's more of a general one because I have number, for me, number twelve. It's just the idea that we, the last new person was Justin, but the rest of us now know whether those things are happening or not and in what fashion. My concern is always if we're bringing a new person in, how will they know those things unless they're actively a part of that process? And so we may be negatively skewing our self-evaluation if a new member is unsure and either chooses NA or maybe zero or one just because they haven't, yeah, because they have not experienced it. So I think I would also, maybe to Julie's point, is I've often identified those things, maybe not our board in totality, but some of us as individuals. Like, yes, I talk to board members in other places and yes, we go to MSBA. So for me, that's almost like a yes, no. And somebody else may interpret it differently, I think.
Director Mark?
Yes, this is the self-evaluation. I think we're doing it mainly for ourselves. I'm wondering if a more efficient way of wording that would be just stay abreast of current and or emerging trends locally, nationally, statewide. Because I don't know that you have to get that information from some other person or collaborating with another person, but just making sure that we keep our professional development and our own understanding about what's going on currently.
Right, like is it more like we're just not sitting in our own vacuum? Are we having diversity of thought? It's kinda how I perceive that question.
And collaborating with colleagues could have multiple definitions, right? I mean, staying, you could stay abreast of current or emerging trends by reading what another board member writes in a journal or on an online blog, or you could do it at the MSBA coffee and conversation or at the MSBA convention. Right, so it's a question of.
Like are we consuming the information, I guess, is the question.
So it's a question of number fourteen then would, would be more an individual thing as opposed to a board as a whole thing. I mean, I think as long as we understand what it's supposed to mean, then we can answer that more realistically or intelligently. I mean, we can't change the wording of the, the statement because it's MSBA's tool. But we can change how we mean to understand it or what that.
What we consider answering the question.
Yeah.
Because it's MSBA's tool, is there some copyright thing that we can't mess with it at all?
Well, well, they'd send us the tool online and we'd complete it. So we, I mean, we'd have to tell them to change the question before they send it to us. I'm not sure that's. And then they score it. And then they score it, right. But if we understand that, you know, when we get, when you get to question number fourteen, we have a common understanding that you're answering that as an individual, your understanding of how much you are collaborating with colleagues or staying abreast of current and emerging trends, issues, and policy solutions.
Yeah, Chair Nathan, I'm very comfortable with that because we, when we do engage in the self-evaluation, we also have open discussion. And if there were new members, we could, oh, explain at that time, this is really what we're talking about. So I think you could probably move on.
I have, well, I have one more in this section.
Okay.
Number twenty-one. I guess Justin was kind of our guinea pig this year with this, with the school board handbook. But together with the superintendent chair responsibility for the orientation of new board members and forming a new inclusive team. So I kind of would like your thoughts on, I mean, I think you had said at one point you thought that the school handbook was very helpful, but what about this other stuff? Inform, you know, a new inclusive team because every time there's an election and if that changes, the composition of the board changes, then it's a new team.
Can I actually answer that from my perspective? I actually felt like the, 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 I don't even know what we call it. The thing we did in the summer where we all got together and talked about the Strength Finder.
The Strengths.
Yes, yeah, that, I think that was, that was where I would answer this question differently now than I would in prior years. So I think that that was a good way to team build and learn about each other and work together.
So that would be the kind of example of information that you would consider before answering that question? That you might not have had before.
Right.
Director Cook, did you have an answer or did you, you can pass.
No, I mean, I, I think the, the question is clear and I'll look forward to responding to the question when we do our self-evaluation.
Director Garcia, did you have number twelve?
That one was more of a, could we just add in the information source? Like, I mean, maybe you are because you're Kathy. Are we, are we using policies that align with research-based best practice? Most of what we get is MSBA model policy and so a lot of, and it's like heavy legal leaning and not all of our laws are specifically research-based. But, you know, they are what they are. So I guess that's an area just to point a new person to that may not know how we develop those policies right at the gate.
Could be an explicit question we ask MSBA is would you describe your policies as research-based best practices?
Right, well, they, yeah, like they're not doing research. They're taking other people's information and creating a policy.
But it could be based on research.
Correct.
Right, other people's research.
Yes. Like they're not doing focus groups and, you know.
Kathy, I had another thought on that in terms of research. Is this something that's included in our school board handbook? That could there be a section to get somebody up to speed about things like that?
About things like?
Policies being research-based.
Right, so like in the information source section of. Right, so like in the information source section, it's like handbook page three.
Right.
So you can answer those questions.
Or based on Karen's statement there, any other potential question that we might want qualifying language regarding? It could all be, well, as we go through the standard press, we can identify other areas.
I kind of think about it, you know, being relatively new and thinking about my experience doing this the first couple of years is that some of the things come up that don't happen very often. You know, they might just be onesie or things that in a new term you might not have experienced yet, but the other board members have. So you might score it lower because you don't experience it, that that's something that the handbook could perhaps get us up to speed on, on now what to look for when you're thinking about this assessment.
Okay. Anything else in standard one? All right, standard two.
Kathy, it was really helpful that you provided the information source of all the different policies because a lot of the questions that I had the last time we did this, I think were really well informed by the information that you provided on what was in the policy as opposed to, you know, us having to do something apart from policy.
And I think that goes to what Dr. McLaughlin said about people who may not have experienced it or may not have gone through the policy process or we didn't review policy 104 in their first six months. This would give them a guide to say, you can read policy 104 before you answer this question to see how you might answer this question.
Correct, because the prompt is to what extent is our board, not me as an individual on the board. So if you just haven't experienced it and you rated a one, that doesn't mean we're not doing it as a board, it just means you haven't experienced it. And so like, maybe it's the prompt to, that we need to adjust.
Because like we just did a question as individual and now we're talking about ourselves. Anything else in standard two?
I want one.
Yes.
Number 26. Communicate its rationale for decisions to the community. Is this something that the board needs to actively do aside from whatever it is we're doing now? I mean, I would hate to put anything more on the communications department because they're running on a shooting as it is. But, I mean, does like the, the videos that we've been doing, the summaries after the board meetings and like things, does that?
So it doesn't say we communicate effectively, it just says, do we?
Yeah.
So I, like, because we had that conver, or I think John was sitting with me, we had that conversation. Like, I think that we maybe saturate the community with information and anyone who reads Dr. Pikel's weekly updates, like, it's communicated, but are people receiving that communication? So like, to me, I would, yes, we communicate our rationale for decisions. And I think that that's a continual issue of where is that magic solution to, we're communicating it and for some reason they're still, from the information that we heard from our colleagues today, not always getting through or there's still a culture of fear of retaliation and things like that. So I just.
I, when I read this question, I think of when we're at the board table and we're about to take a vote, are we each taking the responsibility to share why we're voting? Or do we just call for a vote and you see whether we voted yes or no?
Well, I think what we used to do is have kazillion hour meetings where we all felt the need to say all the things, but now we break it up to like prep for action a bazillion times. And there are some people who will watch the board meeting where it's an action item and see no communication or conversation. And they're like, what?
Because we've already had.
Yeah. Because we had it a million other sessions before. So I, like, yes, we are communicating, but I think you're touching on that we heard that still people are not perceiving us to be clear or effective in that communication.
I think that the receiver needs, needs to take some responsibility in that action as well.
That's not an item on.
I'd also remember that this is an evaluation.
Yep.
And if our evaluation response is that we're not doing a good enough job, that's what the goal setting side of our work is.
That would be my asterisk. Yes, we're communicating.
Right.
And this is where we could improve.
Right.
In some magic, magical and unknown way to me right now.
All right, anything in standard three? All I can say is that there is a boatload of health, safety, security and accessibility standards that I think Mr. Carlson is primarily responsible for.
I, I wondered a little bit for us about number 44. Communicate an expectation that all classrooms will implement effective instructional practices? In my head, question mark, I guess.
I had that too. How does, how, how explicitly does the board do that? Is that your question?
Right, like, we have a qualified and effective and engaged superintendent. So I'm just like, you're doing that, right? And he'll just go, yeah. But are we communicating that at the board table? Like, I, maybe I'm taking for granted that that happens and so I don't communicate by preference that it's occurring often as a board.
I guess, Dr. Garcia, I would, I mean, what we talked about earlier with the Read Act was exactly that.
Yeah.
That we have an expectation that we're going to approve a reading curriculum that's going to do, answer this question for us.
And we're talking about it, I guess, and again, this is like how clearly and effectively we're communicating, like, I know we're having that conversation, but are we going to show up when this is an action item and restate? I am communicating that I have an expectation that all the classrooms are da, 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 da.
Well, we have a strategic plan.
It's implied, maybe.
Well, we have a strategic plan and if everything we're doing is in line with that strategic plan, then I think this, this does happen. That is the expectation, even though the, we're not saying it directly to a teacher in a classroom. And then the other thing I think we have to be careful of is how much is this management and how much of this is governance? Because for everything that MSBA says about the importance of governance, some of this stuff really starts to go over that line into management.
Right.
And I think communicating an expectation, I think this is one that I'm going to look up again to see if it's in policy. Because we communicate our expectations through policy. So if we have a policy that says something like this or close to this, which I'm pretty sure there is one.
I wouldn't expect we have one that says the opposite.
I would not expect that.
No effective instructional practice.
And we're updating our policies regularly, then we should be meeting that standard.
Yes.
Anything else in standard three? Standard four, accountability. Everybody like accountability? I like that. Standard five, advocacy and communication. Everybody likes advocacy? Oh, sorry, Director Mark.
This will be quick. A 66, ensure the public is well-informed of the board's roles and responsibilities. That may be a discussion for another time, that we can provide information and whether we can ensure that they're well-informed. It's a communication thing again.
Right.
So I think we can never have enough discussion, but not tonight about how.
She doesn't want to talk about tonight.
And we can evaluate ourselves that, on our efforts to ensure, but our goals can always reflect the additional work we have to do. So there will be a space to have that conversation. Okay, so I think we've covered the supplemental information and any clarifications of the questions. One of the other things I need to know from you is how do you think you want the results this year? Do you want to do the one-page report like we got last year where we got sent the results? We looked at it, we had a study session on it. MSBA has said that if there's a significant change in our data in one of the areas, they will dig deeper into the questions and say, oh, your performance changed because question 34 last year was this and now that changed. But if we want to see all of the answers to all the questions and everything, how we scored on every question, we would have to have the in-service where MSBA comes and does the presentation of the study session. So I just wanted to know if anybody?
Is there a cost for that?
I asked and there is an additional cost, but I didn't get a quote back on what it is.
I think it's been what, around $900 in the past, but?
I think it's less than $1,000. Last year, the MSBA person who's in charge of development said she didn't think that was necessary for our board because she felt that we could have the conversation on our own, given our experience and.
I think that would be my preference.
That's probably true for this year as well.
I think that, I mean, what I've observed in the in-service is that it's really designed for all boards in Minnesota, all school boards in Minnesota. And that there are a lot of districts that have far fewer students than we do that may need a little bit more, I don't know, handholding, coaching, whatever. But I remember with her, it's kind of, she would say some of these kind of, oh, yeah, we already know that, we already know that, we already know that, we already know that. And it's, you know, it wasn't new. So I'm fine with not having the in-service.
I just think it's helpful to use the same tool. I appreciate the pretty colors. And I think it, it offers us some level of consistency too, because three seats are up this coming election. And so if all three of them are new, then that will obviously probably reflect a change in the response. And so we can go back and say, historically, we've been functioning in this way. Maybe now we'll need to spend $1,000 to identify like what, in what categories is the problem here.
Where does this occur on the ABCD?
That would be my next topic. So we're scheduled to have a study session on the results of the self-evaluation on July 23rd. And that would also be the time where we develop our draft goals and we would take action on that on August 6th. So I've asked Gail Gilman from MSBA to tell us then when would you send us the survey and when would we have to have it done? But it would probably be early midsummer that we would send the evaluation tool electronically for you to complete.
And I'm sorry, I missed the date of the vote. Which date are we voting on?
Seven.
August 6th.
Thank you, board members. We'll move forward on that. Item six, annual board calendar update is in the agenda. Are there any other items a board member would like to bring forward for consideration on a future school board meeting address? Hearing none, there were no questions submitted on the form by board members before the meeting. Our upcoming meeting dates are April 23rd, we have a regular meeting, May 7th, a regular meeting, May 14th, a study session, and May 21st, a regular meeting. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:30 PM.